Well, good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock and the special call meeting today is now hereby called to order. We would like to take a moment of silence for what has happened in Texas, you know, regarding the school shootings, and we also would like to just have a moment of silence just to think about our own children here in Henry County. So if you would join me for a moment of silence, again, just to consider those families in Texas, but to also continue that our children are protected here in Henry County. Thank you. There are two amendments that have been requested by the county manager and county attorney and regarding the agenda, and one of them is to remove item five, which is the USDA lease, and then to add a resolution authorizing the property acquisition regarding Black Hall Road at Rom Creek. We now, are there any other changes or revisions to the agenda? Here are none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to amend.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We're now moving to our agenda item regarding the public hearing regarding the resolution to approve the issuance of the Henry County Development Authority tax-exempt revenue bonds for Hydro Systems Incorporated, and we welcome Mr. Rock Meadows for that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Ladies and gentlemen, the Henry County Development Authority is pleased to come before you this evening to seek approval of a resolution pursuant to the Tefra Resolution for the approval of a tax-free bond issue to support the construction of Hydro Systems' new plant in McDonough, Georgia. The Hydro Systems Company is a California-based company that builds custom bathtubs. It's a manufacturing facility that is coming to place their east coast headquarters here in McDonough in an old warehouse building that's being repurposed. The company has asked the Development Authority to issue two different types of bonds for this transaction. One is a traditional Development Authority bond, which is a taxable bond. It's in the amount of $5 million, and then they have asked that we issue a tax-free bond in the amount of $3.5 million. A tax-free bond requires that approval be obtained from the state of Georgia to issue a tax-free bond, and it requires that we have this hearing. The purpose of this hearing is for you, as the governing board of the county, to be made aware of this application for a tax-free bond, for you to be aware of the fact that the Development Authority has approved the issuance of this bond. In fact, this bond was validated in the Superior Court of Henry County earlier this week along with the taxable bond. But because it's tax-free, it requires your approval for the issuance of a tax-free bond. It's important for everyone here to understand that bonds that are issued by the Development Authority do not involve any tax money at all. It does not require the county to pay anything. It doesn't require any obligation on the part of the county. It doesn't require any obligation on the part of the Development Authority. The individuals who seek the bond find their own financing, and the Development Authority merely serves as a conduit for the issuance of that debt. So the bond will not be deemed to be a debt of the state of Georgia, the county of Henry, or any municipality, political subdivision, or other public body of the state or of the county, and it doesn't constitute any obligation on the part of any individual or elected official. This merely acknowledges that the Development Authority is authorized to issue these bonds, that we've had an opportunity for the public to learn about this issue by virtue of the notice that was published for this hearing, and to provide an opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard in regard to the issuance of this bond at this point in time. So I'll pause and see if there's anybody who wishes to be heard.
Okay. We thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I have some.
Okay. Commissioner Clemens and I have a couple, too, if yours don't cover it. So Commissioner Clemens.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. I have a few questions about the criteria that the Development Authority uses.
Sure.
To determine which companies get to get the tax-free income, because basically it's income that'll come into them that they won't pay taxes on.
It's income that will not require taxes from the bank that actually lends them the money.
Okay, so was there a criteria that you guys used to determine that this company was worthy?
Their criteria, that, excuse me for interrupting you, their criteria that the state of Georgia requires them to fulfill. The Development Authority merely serves as a conduit, and so they have to apply to the state and satisfy the state that they meet those requirements.
Okay, now, what I'm saying is that they can meet the requirements of the state, but you guys still have to decide that you want to, I guess, agree to allow them to do this, just like tonight, we have to decide if we agree that this should happen.
Yes, ma'am.
So what type of criterias did you guys use to determine they were worthy to have this?
Looking at the project as a whole, we have a requirement that the investment that is made in Henry County includes more benefit to the county than any potential break that they get in terms of operating in the county. This particular company will be starting off with approximately 100 employees. They've committed to provide at least 200 employees over the course of the next 10 years. So our criteria, as far as the Development Authority is concerned, when somebody comes for us, to us for a project, is, is this a project that is going to result in a significant investment in the county? Is this a project that's going to bring new jobs into the county? And is this a project that, as a result of the services that they would utilize, do the services that they utilize result in them, in essence, detracting from our tax base? We then present that information to the Board of Tax Assessors for them to join with us in making a determination that that's an appropriate entity for us to try to bring into the county. There are lots of entities that come into the county that the Development Authority helps come that do not seek bonding. But if a company applies for a bond and they meet the criteria that we have, and there's a, Mr. Sledge is here, our executive director, there's a complex formula that he utilizes that determines the benefit versus any detriment that a company brings, and we use that information in making a reasoned decision as to whether or not we induce a company. Does that answer your question?
It does, but I guess you looked at the same benefits that I was looking at. I saw 207 jobs over 10 years.
Yes, ma'am.
And I saw that they were only doing a capital improvement. There was a capital improvement, and then there are also some other tax breaks that they're getting already. So they're getting tax breaks that you guys have granted. Besides this bond, they're only bringing 207 jobs over 10 years.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's, I mean, and I would like to know, you know, if they're getting this tax break, how much are they investing into our tax digest within the next 10 years or over the next three years? I can limit it to three years. What are they bringing to this county over the next three years to be able to get this?
Yes, ma'am. Their commitment, their commitment is to initially bring approximately $5.5 million. Ultimately, their commitment is for $8.5 million in investment plus the jobs that they bring. And so the computation that we make determines that, to the extent that they get any tax benefit, the amount of the benefit in no way comes close to the amount of the benefit that the county gets for the taxes for that company.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
What does the liability fall if this company defaults on the bond?
The bank that finances the bond.
So there's no liability to the county whatsoever?
None whatsoever. That's, that was, as I was stating, there's no liability to the county, to the state, or to the Development Authority.
Can you tell me the difference between the, well, actually, just tell me what the Tefra bond is, if you can explain that?
Sure. The Tefra hearing stands for, and I may get this completely wrong, but it's the Tax Equity Responsibility Act. It's the federal government, which the IRS has rules and regulations as to what companies can qualify for a tax-free bond that's enforced by the state. So the company has to make an application to the state in order to issue, for them to get an allocation for a tax-free bond. The question as to whether or not they apply for a tax-free bond is really up to the company and the entity that finances the bond. In this instance, it's a bank in California. You know, normally, when I appear before you to get a, to seek a tax-free bond and to have a Tefra hearing, it's usually on behalf of the hospital. It's usually on behalf of a governmental entity. But there are a limited number of allocations that are available for private entities, and this company, this is the first tax-free bond that has been requested through the Development Authority, Commissioner Holmes, in at least two decades. I can't even remember the last time we had a tax-free bond, because the cost of going through the bond process, quite frankly, is substantial, and so for some reason, they're financing with their bank in California. They wanted them to have this tax-free, and so if they meet the qualifications and the state approves it, then the Development Authority will approve it as well.
One more question. I, when I saw this late last week, I was just curious if you guys were coming to get approval for a bond, why there weren't any financials, you know, given to the Board of Commissioners so we could review the numbers, at least, of the company? I did reach out to Leonard, and I still haven't received anything in terms of financials for this company. I did see that it was a family-based business, so I don't really know how large this company is, or, you know, if they'll be able to afford to stay in Henry County.
Right.
But if you can elaborate on the financials, how long they've been in business, the reason why they just applied for LLC recently, if you can just go over some of those things, that'd be great.
Sure. The LLC, and like most companies, they have their real estate in one entity in the operating company as a separate entity, and the real estate company leases the building to the operating company. We do get certain financial information, but under the law, they are entitled to declare that it is a trade secret, and we are limited in the amount of information that we can provide as far as that's concerned, but we do utilize certain amount of that information in terms of determining their viability. We have had, in the history of my representation of the Development Authority, which has been approximately 40 years, we have had one company during that time period that declared bankruptcy. And, you know, there's only a limited amount of information that we can get, and there's only a limited, even more limited amount of information that we can provide to the public because the companies assert that that is trade-secret information.
That's, I mean, it's odd. I mean, if they're looking for us to be a, or to partner with them on approving this bond, it's kind of odd that they wouldn't, you know, display any of their financial information. I mean, that's kind of what makes me uncomfortable with it.
Sure. I understand your question. I understand your concern, and we do as much due diligence as we can, but we're limited in the amount of information we get as well.
Okay, I have a question. A couple of, some of them are uncovered, but I just want to make sure I do understand.
Sure.
First of all, this is an existing facility, correct?
I'm sorry?
This is an existing facility here in the county?
The building is an existing facility. It's the old Snapper Warehouse.
Okay, and so it's been vacant for how long now?
For a while. I don't, a number of years. I don't know completely.
Okay, okay, so it's been vacant, and obviously, by it being vacant, I assume that there's some depreciation and issues that factored into your analysis.
Oh, sure.
Of whether this was an investment or not.
Sure. Another, another major-
That is to the benefit the county, so, okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, another major consideration is this is a manufacturing concern. You know, there are a lot of people who are concerned about the number of logistics facilities, but this is manufacturing. Mr. Sledge has been working on a number of projects that are manufacturing. We've brought a couple of major ones here that didn't require bonds, so this is yet another manufacturing facility.
I understand, and there is a difference between manufacturing and warehousing.
And logistics, yes.
And logistics. Okay, and we did say that it began at about, with 100 jobs and then would ramp up to about 207, so, and again, do, what types of jobs? Can you speak to that, or is that still trade secret as well, so?
No, ma'am. The, and the numbers that they give us are their minimums, because those are enforceable, and if they don't meet their, and this, I think, Commissioner Clemens, I think this helps answer your question. If they don't meet, they have to make an annual report, and if they don't meet their investment targets, or if they don't meet their job targets, then we have what we call clawbacks. So to the extent that they've gotten any benefit, they lose that benefit as a result of failing to meet the commitments that they've made. So, Madam Chair, the expectation is that these are individuals who are skilled workers who make above-average wages, but I can't tell you, you know, how much above average, but the expectation is they're, they are starting, again, their east coast facility here in Henry County. They expect that to be their east coast headquarters, having been in California for a number of years where they are currently based.
Okay, and then my last question, just was really just a restatement, is that this tax-free bond, and we need, again, if you can restate what we mean when we say tax-free, and can you also restate that there is no negative impact potentially to the county or to the taxpayers?
That's, that's correct.
Could you restate that, because I think that's important?
Sure, sure. As a matter of fact, it's in dark, bold print in Section Four of the resolution in your book. "The bonds shall not be deemed to constitute a debt of the state of Georgia, the county of Henry, or any municipality, political subdivision, or other public body of the state of Georgia, nor a pledge of the faith and credit or taxing power of any such public body, nor shall any public body be subject to any pecuniary liability thereon," to answer Commissioner Holmes' question, "except as to the authority subject to the terms of the bond documents." So we are a flow-through entity, and ultimately the responsibility goes back to the bank who's lending them the money. And the tax-free part of it, once again, that has to do with their federal income tax, and that has to do with the company that ultimately buys the bond. So when you hear your financial advisor talk about buying tax-free bonds, that's what they're talking about, and in this instance, these are investor bonds. They're being bought by a bank in California.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens, and then we'll go to Commissioner Holmes.
So I'll just tell you what concerns me. It's, I feel I don't have enough balance of what they're getting from the county as opposed to what they're bringing to the county, because I know that there's a limited amount of Tefras that you can have, and then the criteria is so super important to me, because you've said that if the state approves it, then the Development Authority automatically approves it. And so I think that, from a local standpoint, that there should be some type of criteria, that every company that just gets approved from the state should not automatically, but there should be a higher level of criteria for our county, considering we have the Freeport exemption rule, which means that even if they're selling bathtubs and they're manufacturing them in our county and they're using people at $12 an hour, which is above minimum wage, and they ship them out of the county, we don't get any tax dollars for that. And then there are other tax breaks that you guys have given them that we're not talking about tonight, and I don't know what all of those are either. So I just think that when the companies come into our community just to give us 100 jobs at $12 an hour, or to subcontract those jobs out to a temp service is not sufficient enough, because you tell me you're gonna bring 100 jobs. 100 jobs at what? If it's 100 supervisor jobs, is it 100 executive jobs? And then you still got tax breaks. So, you know, I'm not saying that you shouldn't, but I think the criterias that you use for this is super important, and I think that the Development Authority needs to look at that. Plus, you become a partner in this. Tefra means that you become a partner. Who are the other partners to this company? This company is based in California, so I don't know that all of the legwork has been done, and if it was done, then what is it, you know, are we privy to that, that we're voting on something tonight, that we're not privy on enough information? So it's based out of California, correct?
The company is headquartered in California, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, there are two things I want to clear, make clear. I said it's, the wages are above average, not above minimum wage. So they have been computed to be above the Henry County average. I can't tell you what that number is.
20,000?
Twenty?
Forty-one is the figure we would get.
Forty-one thousand is the average wage of the employees.
That's the average salary, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Income, household?
Ma'am.
Okay.
That's per employee.
For manufacturing?
For manufacturing job, it's 41,000 per employee, yes, ma'am. Yes, yeah, yeah, for this project.
You mentioned something about, at some point, they may be required to do an annual report?
They are required to do an annual report.
So in that particular annual report, will they then have to disclose an income statement and a balance sheet?
No, they have to disclose that, they have to disclose information showing that they made the investment in Henry County, and in fact, they've already started making that investment. And they are required to provide documentation that they hired the number of employees that they said they would employ.
Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
Tell me about property taxes. What kind of property taxes would they be paying?
They will be paying, I'm looking to Mr. Sledge, who's got his figures here.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Henry County Board of Commissioners. Based on the information that was provided to the Development Authority for this particular project, we know that they have purchased the building at 385 Highway 155. They have closed on that building, and they're going through a process now of upfitting and improving that building for their manufacturing operation. They are also in the process of purchasing machinery and tools and other equipment for that building. When we ran our analysis, the analysis that Mr. Meadows referred to is Loki, which was developed by Georgia Tech. We run that fiscal model, that economic impact model, and one of the criteria that we use, to your question, Commissioner Clemens, is making sure that it has a positive net present value for Henry County. And this particular project, while I'm not able to pull up that specific file, I do recall that project having a net present value over and above $100,000 for this project. Based on the information that I was able to pull up very quickly, on the personal property side for that particular, for the project, and this number is actually even understated, over a 10-year period, the company's net tax liability, even considering the abatement on the real, I'm sorry, on the personal property tax, is estimated to be $160,000.
Over the 10-year period, ma'am.
And on this particular project, also because we know that they are improving the building, until the annual assessment is done, in terms of any changes in that value, it will be tough to determine exactly what the actual abatement will be. But again, based on the information that was provided to us, the project did have a positive net present value. To Mr. Meadows' point, they are adding the jobs, and they actually have started hiring aggressively in Henry County, and so I hope that does continue to answer some of the questions that you have.
Commissioner Holmes?
How do we know, if we have not seen the financial, how do we know that they can maintain the liabilities of the building?
We don't.
Okay, my question is, this has been vetted through the Henry County Development Authority as well, correct, and their recommendation?
It's been vetted and approved by the Henry County Development Authority. It's been vetted and approved by the Board, Henry County Board of Tax Assessors as well.
Right.
And it's been vetted by the state of Georgia.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for the presentation and addressing our questions. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we're gonna open up the public hearing and allow individuals who wish to speak in favor of this matter to, they will be given a total of 10 minutes, and those who wishing to speak against will be given a total of 10 minutes. So those wishing to speak in opposition to this proposal, will you please come forward now? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. Hearing none. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, would you please come forward now? Again, anyone wishing to speak in favor, will you please come forward now? Hearing none, this concludes our public hearing. So at this time, are there any other questions or comments from the board?
Madam Chair, we would therefore ask that you adopt the resolution that's contained within your notebooks for the approval of the Tefra hearing in regard to this transaction.
Okay, so now the floor is open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns, further discussions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The resolution has been approved.
May I get your signature, Madam Chair?
Okay, can we do this? Yes, okay. If you can give it to the secretary, please, and she'll give it, our county clerk, excuse me, give it to our county clerk, and she will get it to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I be excused?
You may be. Okay, you want us to go ahead and sign this, ma'am? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move into our next agenda item regarding the proposed 2018-2019 annual budget. And we'll call our county manager and deputy county manager forward.
At this time, Chair, before we begin the budget presentation, we will allow our chief appraiser, Mr. Johnson, to come up and do an annotated or abbreviated version of what was presented during the first public hearing for the budget. Once Mr. Self finishes, then myself and Mr. Johnson will begin the budget presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Brief presentation on the digest update. Our gross, well, I'm happy to report we had an increase, a gross amount of 7.55% and a net of 7.38%. Looking at our main three categories, which are residential, commercial, and industrial, you can see them at 8.73%, 5.34%, and 15.18%, respectfully. The next thing I would draw your attention to is the motor vehicles, and what's, the reason for the reduction here is we're changing the form of taxation from ad valorem to point of sale. It's just, it's really a net zero there. Sorry, is that better?
Better, thank you.
Sure. So again, that's just changing one form of taxation for the others. It's going off of our books to a point of sale. And then here is the gross again and the net. Quickly into a historical- Quickly into a historical context, in 2008, we had 585 homes under $70,000. Through the real estate collapse, if you will, that number grew to almost 17,000. And that's us following, you know, market value. We're currently at a little less than 1,500. On the other side of it is the homes over $500,000. You can see in 2008, this was 741, dropping to 135 at the low. And then here we are today at 451 homes over $500,000. Looking at the addition of new parcels within residential, you can see from 2008 to 2014, grew less than 2,000 overall. And then 15, 16, 17, and 18, roughly about 1,500, 1,600 per year. So we're getting healthier and an expansion, I guess quality growth is what I would call it. As far as the types of growth that we deal with, we deal with real growth and inflationary growth. The real growth is the addition of new buildings. Inflationary is market value increase. For residential, you can see them at 3.52 and 5.21. Moving to commercial, same thing, real and inflationary, 1.84 to 3.5. And then we get into the industrial growth. And this one is a little bit unusual in that the real growth outpaced inflationary growth. And that's due to the construction that I'm sure a lot of us see, at 8.98 to 6.20%. Again, here's the overall growth at 7.55% and the net growth at 7.38. I will make a couple disclaimers or reminders. The percentages that you see don't reflect individual properties. We've had some that have gone up more than this, and some that have actually gone down in value depending on the situation. And also, the digest is still moving, and will move until we deliver it to the Tax Commissioner's Office on or before July the 1st. So that concludes my presentation. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Self? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. I apologize for the small delay. But again, we have presented to the board for the last couple of weeks, the budget. And what we wanted to do this evening is to give you an abbreviated version of what we've gone over during the required public hearing, and then during the workshop meeting we had several weeks back. What we will be doing tonight is just highlighting what that final number will look like, what the priorities are within the budget, and then answering any questions that the board may have. I do want you all to know that it was important to have our chief appraiser present his information because that is somewhat of our starting point for how we develop our budget. Again, keep in mind, we haven't finalized all of our numbers, so again, we are trying to be as frugal as possible in terms of developing this budget. As you all know, we did have a set of priorities for FY19. Public safety continues to be a priority, and the hiring and the retention of our public safety employees is still a priority. You will notice in the budget as we get further into it that we are looking at Phase Two of the Public Safety Reset Program. Also, in our budget, we had our Public Works, which we have been successful in our See, Click, Fix application. We've had a number of constituents that have put in requests, and I'm pleased to report that our DOT Department is being very attainable in making sure that those requests are answered. It is certainly getting in front of some of the other priorities, but we do want to make sure that we are being accountable to those that are submitting those requests as well. Under our Leisure and Public Services, again, some of our budget priorities are to identifying and connect existing resources in the community by facilitating collaboration between the county and the citizens, and we will be looking to enter into more public and private partnerships when it comes to that. We're also looking at creating and developing sustainable recreational programs without limitations for all of the citizens of Henry County. Under our Community Development, we're going to continue to promote and organize quality development standards by providing professional and technical expertise that embraces a vibrant, diverse, and thriving economy. And then for our employees, we are looking to add an employee clinic and finalize our class and comp study. So let's talk about what's not in the budget. The millage rate remains at 12.733, and that's the information that we've presented to the board since the beginning of our budget development. There are no pay increases across the board for our county employees because, again, we are in the middle of our class and comp study, and I'm pleased to let the board know that we did have our first initial meeting with our consultants to start looking at what that number will look like. We will be scheduling meetings with the board very soon to start discussing the results of the class and comp study. The budget also doesn't include any planning studies funding, although we do know that TADS and SIDS are going to be critical to us. We are going to look at some other options in terms of funding for those type of activities. But we also want to get from the board in the next couple of months, what the priorities are in terms of some CIDs and TADS, and then we will come back with some recommendations on that. If you all will recall, during the last budget or public hearing, we did talk about capital projects, although that is not included in this budget, we did provide to you all a preliminary list of what those projects will look like. We're hoping to bring that back to you all next month with some funding options, and I'm sure that our staff will be pleased if the board does elect to move forward with some much-needed capital improvements. And then finally, the budget does not include the court software, but again, that is part of the overall capital projects. So let's talk about our sources of revenue. As you all are aware, we have various sources. We have our property taxes, our sales and use taxes, our license and permits, intergovernmental grants, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, miscellaneous revenues, other resources. So our total revenues that we are showing is going to be 161, 535, 766. Total sources, again, is the 161, 535, 766. Again, we have to have a balanced budget, so if you'll take an opportunity to look at the slide on the overhead, we have different general fund appropriations. We have our legislative and executive, our unallocated costs, our judicial system, public safety, public works, health and welfare, culture and recreation, housing and development, and other uses. If you'll notice, under legislative and executive, that represents about 13% of the budget, where our judicial system represents about 10.92%. Public safety represents almost 54%, and then the remaining departments represent the balance, which takes us to 100%, which gives us a balanced budget of 161, 281, 568. So let's move from FY18 to FY19. The current FY18 adopted budget was, again, 154,357,270. This current fiscal year, we did have amendments which totaled $7.5 million, which took our final budget to 161,906. This year, we started our FY19 budget at 155,566,529. And then within that budget, we had about $6 million worth of operational needs, again taking our FY19 proposed budget to 161, 535, 766.
Okay, part of the budget for fiscal year 19 would be healthcare insurance increase. The commission elected to pay at 75% of the 100% cost, which is $367 of employee, 25% was passed on to our staff. The rec center in Hampton and Lucas Grove, the new kitchen facilities, 138,453. Reclassification of positions, which has to be a day laborer here, the day porter for that position, 29,874. Technology services, which is an ERP position for our new software coming online in the first of next year, 87,624. The grant writer position at 73,586. Also sheriff, SROs. We'll provide two SROs from the county, two SROs be funded by the school system. We also would, with the sheriff, increase four of the court bailiffs to be gun carrying, be certified police officers, which is a small increase per day of their per diem. And also, two one-half year for the new veterans court and coverage for the other courts in place. If you see the salary increase for certification, that'll continue, 500,000. The big one this year is a $3.5 million pension payment. If you remember, in the past years, it's only been like $500,000 underpaying the pension. This year is the first year we've actually paid the recommended amount through GEP Core to be sustainable in our pension activities. And also, as the county manager mentioned, 500,000 for our employee clinic. Proposed revenues and expenditures by fund, you'll see here, it just shows that our revenue intake is balanced neutral with our expenditures at a total budget with our enterprise funds at 187,425,693. Other agencies, at this point, the other agencies remain the same, the Health Department, Counseling Center, DFAX, and libraries presented earlier. However, there will be some savings of some projects in the future to help offset some of the library concerns, to continue the state funding that's in place now, that we must match to last year's budget to continue that funding. So we are looking at avenues for that and do some adjusting toward mid-year of some other projects that we hope to come in under to help that project out. And finally, just a quick synopsis of how we are and how we got to where we are today. You said FY19, we're starting off with 6.4 fund balance. Of that, 38 million comes back to us as our 18, 25% of FY18. The excess, we're looking at maybe 12 million, hopefully coming back due to opening positions and some frugal department heads, which gives a starting balance of 57,76,685. Our revenue intake, 151,5, which gives us a balance of 208. Sounds really good, like we're rolling there, but FY19, that 161,5 budget balances at 47. With a 25% required fund balance, you subtract 40, leaving 6.7 million. Now, requirements that were unexpected this year is condemnation of airport land, also tax refunds of about 25, or 2.5 million, which gives us a negative balance of 230,000. Class and comp at 3.3, a balance of negative 3.5. We're hoping with a 5% digest increase, gives us a balance of 608,000 in our fund balance, above our regular day fund of the 48, 47, I'm excuse you, 40,380. So that's kind of a breakdown of how we got to where we are today, and some of the unexpected payments that we must pay the citizens lately. So what's next? We're planning, again, continuing to plan with a county-wide strategic plan. We've been looking for this for a while and looking for our outside agent to come in and develop with the commissioners being the driving force and the community input of where our strategic plan for Henry County wants to be and give us a roadmap to success. We're moving towards performance measuring at our department level. Our goal is to produce a budget that has performance measures so we can see how well we're performing and fund that performance level at a level that we, that you guys, the commissioners, decide is right for Henry County. We have a long-term goal of increasing our bond rating. We don't work away from fund balance, and let me say that again, we must work towards not having to use fund balance to balance our operational budget. Fund balance, whatever may be left over, if we do correct budgeting in the future by performance measures, we should not have large fund balances left over. We should be doing adequate budgeting, and if we do have it, it should be one-time purchases, not used to every year to make up the budget. Capital improvement project list, they'll be coming, as Sherry said earlier, in the very near future. What's some avenues of discussion for procurement? We've never had a capital improvement list. We've always hit and miss as we have money left over in Henry County. Our goal is to have a planned list, there's no surprises. And we want to get to a point where there's, that surprises go away, and we have a planned roadmap for Henry County. And we'll ask, answer any questions you guys might have?
Okay, we've heard the presentation from the county manager. We've already had our public hearing, so are there any questions from the board regarding the budget? Commissioner Holmes?
I just have one question. There was a part of the presentation where you had a line item where you had reclassification of a position of nearly 30,000?
Yes, sir. That was actually to take the current day porter that's in this building, that does all the cleaning from a part-time position to a full-time position.
And the courts, Commissioner, I know you had, the courts are in this budget to move them over to a cleaning company.
That is correct.
That is included in there, too.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Okay, again, we've already had our public hearing, and really, did anyone try to sign up for comments at all? Okay. So anyway, at this point in time, there are no more questions from the board. The floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Are there any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. As previously stated, the USDA lease extension was removed from the agenda, and the agenda was amended as approved to reflect so. But we'll now go to the resolution authorizing the acquisition for Black Hall Road at Rum Creek, and we'll ask our county manager to come forward for that presentation.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Typically, we would discuss these in executive session before voting on them, but there's really no need in this instance. Our SPOST project, Black Hall Road at Rum Creek, we are in right-of-way acquisition. I think, is this the only one you think we're going to have? I think this is the only parcel left. We have been working with the property owners and have come really close to resolving this case. The problem is, SPOST has a little timing deadline. In order to qualify for some funding, we have to certify that we've acquired all the right-of-way by the end of this fiscal year, which means if we, even if we make a deal tomorrow, it may take us a few weeks to close. So we may be in a position where we simply have to file our condemnation petition to acquire ownership of the title of, to this right-of-way we need. We will not stop working with this property owner. We're down to some sort of design-type issues that we're working with, and we're fairly optimistic that we'll get them resolved. So what we're asking you today to do is adopt this resolution authorizing my office to go ahead and acquire title, to file the petition to acquire this title, so that we can have this right-of-way in time for us to get the state funding necessary. I have communicated this, property owner has a lawyer, I've communicated this to their lawyer. I don't think, they've not indicated any issue with it. They know we're going to get the right-of-way. It's just a matter of working out the details. And we're really less about arguing, less, I mean, money will always, money's always an issue. We're arguing less about money in this than we are about some landscaping features. So that's sort of where we are on this. So we'd ask that you go ahead and approve this resolution and let Rocky move forward with acquiring this last parcel of property, so we can avail ourselves of the state funding that's required to complete this project.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clemens?
Rocky, the question is about, is this the parcel that's owned by the Lakes Five Civic Association, or is this the private property?
It is the homeowners association.
Right. And, you know, we kind of discussed that about the, was there no funding that we could do? Because the only issue was that once you take up that side, I know it's the bridge project, so when you're coming across the bridge, that right side where the trees are aligned, and how that's going to affect that lake?
That's the whole argument we have with them.
And so, you know, we have, we're working now down to some of the details of whether we can give them the landscaping they want or not. And if we can't, it's going to be a dollar issue. So that, and that's really, the lake is fine. We're not going to harm the lake. We're going to, and they don't, there's no allegation that we're going to physically, you know, jeopardize the dam or the lake. The concern is the aesthetic view of it. And we recognize that that's their concern, and Rocky and his people are trying to do what they can.
Was there any funding? I mean, because we talked about, and actually, this is District Five, Commissioner Holmes. Yeah. But they met with me. So it's, just to give you an understanding of what it is, so it's coming down, Walt Stevens coming where the bridge and the Lakes Five, the lake is, right there, the bridge is moving. So all of that land and that green space and the tree lines that are there is going to be taken away. So, you know, those aesthetics that are there and what's keeping the water from, you know, being there, I mean, it's just a whole lot, so. I mean, just so you know, that's what's going on with this.
Another question? From the board? Okay. Okay. All right, well, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, resolution is approved. Okay, we'll now move into our upcoming meetings and events. On June the 5th, we, at 9:00 a.m., we have the regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And then on June 19th, at 6:30 p.m., will be the regular Board of Commissioners meeting. We do also want to announce that this evening at 7:30 p.m. here in this room, there will be a town hall meeting regarding the regional transit ATL link and the potential impact it has to Henry County. There will be a panel discussion revolving, involving Georgia Department of Transportation, the Atlanta Regional Commission, and then we'll have the Chair of Gwinnett to also talk about their journey as they've grown in the past, as we are in the process of growing today. So, and then again, there will be an opportunity for individuals in attendance to submit questions to be addressed by the panel. So again, there are the upcoming meetings and events at this time. If there's nothing else for the good of the group, we call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments or discussion items? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, well, thank you.